Good afternoon. This is the Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, May 23, 2012. And to establish a quorum. If there are anybody in the audience who wishes to speak, the quorum has been established. Is there anyone who does wish to address the commission? Okay. And do you promise to, do you swear to tell the truth to the Planning Commission as you know it? As well as you know it? Okay, thank you. Disposition of minutes. Does anybody have any questions, changes?
Well, we have two sets of minutes, it looks like. One from April 18 and one from the special public hearing, May 2nd.
On May 2nd.
Which looks kind of sparse, to tell you the truth, with all the time we spend. So I'm a little bit thrown off by the, I know it's nice to keep concise, but I think it's, I think it covers the gist of what we need to talk about. So I'll move that. We accept these minutes, both the April 18th and the May 2nd of 2012.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? May I? Aye. Disposition of minutes passes. Go to case number 12-05, 152 and 154 Mill Street, RVC Architects. This comes under the heading of the Title 41. See, John, do you want to go ahead and describe?
Yes, I can.
The project?
This is a project being proposed by Felix Galliano. He's the owner of 152 and 154 Mill Street. He has applied for a permit to build a new rental housing project at that site. The applicant and representing him today is John Valentor from RVC Architects. It is, the existing zoning is R3 multi-unit residential. Current land use there are two single unit residential dwellings, each permitted for five tenants. And the proposed use will be for a six three-bedroom apartments in a single structure, 18 bedrooms Going through the different reviews from the different departments, from the code office, like I said, it is owned R3, so it is a permissible use. Front setback is 20 foot, 10 inches, where 25 foot is required, but it does meet the setback of the other structures down through there. Rear setbacks, 55 feet, 40 required, so it's okay. Side setbacks are okay. The height was okay. Lot coverage was okay, both for the building and the total of the property with the parking. Flood was, it is in the flood zone, so that's one of the reasons the building is elevated with parking underneath. They probably will have to put some vents on the one solid wall side, but that's, the other side is open, so that should not be a problem. Parking, 18 sparse spaces are required and are provided. Bicycle, the new ordinance requires bicycle pedestrian, or bicycle rack plan, whatever it's called, that, I think John's going to discuss that. It was not shown on the prints, and he's going to have to identify that, as well as the dumpster and trash situation. We do have it on the agenda for the Shade Tree for June 14. I did get a comment back from the Shade Tree already that the service barrier they're showing as a large tree is not considered a large tree, so they'll have to switch that out. And I think they'll have to add one other, but it should not be a problem. No major concerns from the fire department, from Chief Troxell. The police department had requested lighting in the parking lot, which is pretty common that we will probably require on the backside of the building. And there are, there is a, I did receive a prepared statement from Andy Stone, Director of Public Works, just prior to this meeting. If you'd like, I can read it or distribute it to each one of you, however you'd like. It's rather lengthy.
You want to just go ahead and?
Yeah, go through it. John, one question, in terms of the flood base level. So in theory, that's all parking and utilities and everything like that would be elevated as well?
Right. Well, the base flood is at 640, and the first floor is at 641, but the grade in that area is at 633, so that's seven foot. So the parking will be underneath. So yes, the air conditioning units and such will be mounted like a lot of the buildings down there are, and up out of the floodway.
I didn't mean to interrupt, but I could see that being an issue.
That's fine. Okay. A prepared statement, again, from Andy Stone. Based on the plan review, engineering and public work staff conducted on the plans we had on April 10, the designer is going to have to provide quite a bit more information prior to our recommendations for your approval. Our plan review response summary captures our concerns, but I specifically want to draw the commission's attention to the planned utility connections in Mill Street. The city recently completed a major sanitary sewer replacement project on Mill Street and finished the project by repaving the street. The current 152 Mill Street plan shows three city utility connections in Mill Street, water, sanitary, and storm, and a fourth possible connection with gas. Two of these connections, storm and gas, are shown on the south side of the street, requiring a full width street cut, which will require a closure. As noted in our review comments, the existence of the storm line in this area is unconfirmed. The designer or contractor will have to confirm the location of this line via exploratory excavation, then repair the street sidewalk curve to standard. If the line is not present, designer must provide an alternate plan. Also, the plans, also, the plans as provided do not show stormwater calculations justifying the line size selection. We will need to review these calculations. Additionally, the new sanitary sewer is deeper in this area than the previous sewer, requiring a larger hole. We have provided a Mill Street sewer plan to the developer for them to use as they revise their drawings. Considering the size and quantity of these excavations and the extensive amount of work my utility crews will be undertaking this summer, I will require the contractor working on this 152 Mill Street project to conduct the excavations and expose the utilities in the street. City crews will complete the actual tap once the lines are exposed. The contractor will be required to file the standard street closure permit when planning this work. He will also be required to replace the street in accordance with the trench repair standard shown in the Mill Street sewer plans. He will also be required to reinstall the pavement markings that would be damaged in this area. Engineering and Public Works will inspect all this work, ensure it is done to standard. The developer should know upfront that this work will be expensive and should plan accordingly. I provided an estimate of the capacity fees in the plan review response summary, but I want to reiterate that those are not the connection fees. His costs for the excavation and replacement of the street and walk and my cost for labor and materials at the actual tap constitute the connection fees. I regularly interact with developers and designers who underestimate the costs associated with complex utility connections, then are angry with the city during construction and try to shortcut to save costs. Lastly, Title 507 is in effect. This requires all new construction plans to provide a stormwater pollution prevention plan, SWP 3. The requirements are set forth in Athens City Code 5.07.04, and the developer should use the ODNR Rainwater and Land Development Manual, specifically Chapter 8. It is unfortunate this project is happening a year after the major infrastructure improvements took place on Mill Street, but I suppose it cannot be helped. That said, the developer needs to be prepared to deal with the cost for the utility connections, and the city needs to be prepared for the continued disruption on Mill Street. I look forward to seeing the plan revisions noted in our plan review summary. I will need to see them before I can recommend approval to you. I thank the commission for the time to hear my concerns. Sincerely, Andy Stone, City Engineer, Director of Public Works.
What was the date on that?
That was about a half an hour before this meeting. He sent this to me.
Okay. That would explain why we don't have it.
Right. I do have copies though, for you.
Before we have questions to John, does Representative from RVC wish to speak?
I want to see the new blue screen.
I gave it to him right when we walked in. Okay.
I read that letter.
Okay.
Just before the meeting. That's fine. I don't see any problems in there. We just did get the Mill Street this morning, though. We just got the sewer improvements project drawings, which we would use to design our sewer taps at that area.
Okay.
It was quite the challenge. And when he says that it's deep and requires trenching, the lines really are deep down there, so.
We ran into that on Graham Avenue, too. I understand, you know, I mean, what can we do? That's what's going to have to happen. I do appreciate the, I mean, the ability to know in advance of the situation. A lot of times, we don't know exactly what we're going to be in for until we get into it. So in my opinion, it's going to make it more clear.
It's that Engineering and Public Works Department. It's a nice combination. Andy indicates that he wants to have a city inspector on site during your work. I'm curious as to whether or not that will be an additional charge. For example, we did a tap down on Richland Avenue that was for the fire suppression singularly, $10,000.
For what now?
To get the tap.
To get the tap?
To, for the installation, because of all the, all the time, the man-hours, and all the utilities that were in there, and what they had to work around. So when we say it could be significant, I just want to share that one.
Well, we are providing fire protection in this building. I'm not sure exactly, it's not 100% designed yet. I mean, one of the items on his list was he wanted to see the riser diagrams and the connections for the sprinkler system. We'll do that, we do that when we get the contractor on board that actually provides the design for the system and does the calculations. Now, it isn't R13 sprinkler system. It's not an ordinary hazard. So the sprinkler system that is required for this building will not be as sophisticated as would normally be in a commercial building. Hopefully, it won't need bigger than a two-inch line to come in. Because we can supply this off domestic. We don't have to have a separate fire line. We don't have to backflow, we have backflow preventer, but it's a small affair compared to what would be necessary in a commercial application.
So the unknowns I saw were from Mr. Paskey's review was bicycle racks and dumpsters.
Well, we have, I have it on mine, maybe you don't have it on yours, but we've located them.
Okay, do we have something that shows where these are?
Bike rack we're placing in the rear of the, on the grass at the corner of the parking lot, at the rear of the building. And the trash containers would be set behind a fence that would be located right before the very first parking spot coming in from Mill Street, so it would be concealed. It would also help conceal the parking.
Where the very first parking?
It hasn't entered yet.
And it will be shielded, is that what I heard you say?
Excuse me?
It will be shielded, shielded, fenced?
It'll be fenced in. We got the fencing details on here.
Yeah, I thought I saw those.
We also have to have fences at all the parking lots that are adjacent properties. So we do have fences that will be on the east and west side of the property where the, where the parking spots that join the adjacent property. And this would, this fence would actually be a continuation of that fence on the Mill Street side that would make a 90 degree turn to conceal the trash containers behind there. There's more things on this. We started to do a lot of the stuff that was indicated by Andy Stone. We waited, and it's not on your drawing, but I bet our drawings are starting to reflect the requirements from that stormwater management system. And it's Chapter 8 of the ODNR's residential plan. And I've read through it. It's not much more than we'd normally do anyway on a job. Silk fencing around the property, disturbed areas, a nice gravel driveway in and out to make sure that the construction does not disrupt too bad the public streets. And we will make this part of, on this particular project, I should say, that it's not just going to be turned over to a contractor to go willy-nilly, that we are going to be monitoring and administering the construction of this particular job ourselves, RVC. So we'll have a, it'll be easier, I think, to get through this, because I'm the one that's going to sit here and listen to what you're, what we need to do and know it, opposed to a contractor that might not. But a lot of the items that are in this section, which we could include in the contract for construction to the contractor, because they really can't show them on a drawing, is talking about spill protection, waste disposal, containers. A lot of it is the mechanics of the actual construction that they would need to make sure that they conform with, you know, like you don't dump paint down the storm source. So we would try to incorporate this into the contaminated soils, equipment fueling and maintenance. These are procedural items, and a lot of it, you know, the logistics of getting the building built that these contractors would have to just make sure that they adhere to when they were doing the construction. They're not things that I would show on a set of drawings, a lot of them.
You mean in terms of compliance with the stormwater prevention?
Correct. Compliance with, Chapter 8 is additional construction site pollution prevention and small construction site concerns, controls, I should say.
Unfortunately, I feel, you know, without Andy being able to recommend to us that he has all the information that he needs, it'd be difficult for this body to, is this considered preliminary, or are we?
Today, no.
No?
Well, the thing of it is, you know, we, you know, we will, we have to submit this for final review by these guys, anyway. I mean, we haven't had enough time to do all the engineering for this project yet. We haven't really started construction documents at all. Pretty much, we've just gone through the preliminary site review requirements, and obviously, everybody responds. And then I would think that we should, you know, we will modify our documents, resubmit them, and as long as we conform with all these things, I don't know, that's.
I'd like to think in the future, we're going to have this nailed down a little better with the preliminary than a final. And that's what Paul and I have been talking about, of how we do that.
Well, when I have the city engineer saying to the Planning Commission that the designer is going to have to provide quite a bit more information prior to our recommendation for your approval, that's fairly significant. So is this something that you can pull together here, John, and bring back?
Well, like I say, a lot of this is the engineering. We haven't started construction documents as of yet. Normally, I don't start those until we go through all the reviews. I don't want to do something wrong. And we just, we, these guys respond to what we submit, and then we, right at this time, haven't had enough time to incorporate all that into the documents. We acknowledge it needs to be done.
What was your construction timeframe proposed?
Well, we're not going to start, this summer is not a good year to try to do anything, so.
So we have some time?
Oh, yeah. I mean, this will not, because of the shortened summer season, this project was, is not intended to begin construction until next spring.
Of 2013.
So the property owner has tenants probably lined up for?
Yeah, they're already in there now.
For fall, but for?
They wanted to do this, but when I pointed out that we only have like?
Two months.
From June till August to get the thing built, I said, there's no way. You're going to get it done before spring or fall quarter. And that goes with a lot of these residential jobs that are, but we wanted to get through and get started on the processes here, so we could get these things all taken care of in advance, and so we do not get caught without having, the window for these kinds of projects is very thin. So we have to make sure that whenever we are, can start work, everything is done. So that's why we're starting this early.
Some other items I just feel like I have to point out, you're significantly, well, I don't even know what that ratio is.
What?
What is that, 20, 2,500 to 6,500 building? It's within the requirements. I just wanted to note that it's a significant increase in terms of building landscape.
Where are you reading that now, Paula?
You say your existing square footage is two frame structures each with approximately 1,260 gross square feet, and the proposed is one with 6,530 square, square feet.
Three stories.
It meets the requirements. I just want to say that, you know, I have concerns still about the increased density in the Mill Street Stewart area, in addition to these large, larger buildings that are indeed allowed. It's just, it's kind of changing the face of the area.
We did try to draw a little drawing here somewhere. Did you have that drawing as well?
You mean the replacement, existing versus proposed?
So you can see what's net around it, how it fits.
And really, if I'm reading it correctly, this is John's report, right?
Oh, yes.
Okay. And it's actually two frame structures, each with 1,260. So really, we're talking about 24, 25, two.
Just 6,000.
So we've, yeah, we have increased quite, quite a bit, but, you know.
It's worth going through yours. How many were a bit of a delay while he does the rest of it, possibly? I'm having a hard time wrapping my mind around how much coverage there is on the lots.
You said it was like 57? Where is it?
But you see, it's half the size of my lot at home, and I look at the size. I mean, it's the back half, but, and I just, I can't see it, so I'd like to, maybe John could do that when we come back.
The total coverage of the property?
Yeah.
Current, let's see, the building?
There's two, right?
There'd be two parcels that would be joined together, obviously. The building footprint is 2,177 square feet. The parcel square footage is 11,374. So it's 19% of the parcel, the two parcels are covered by footprint of the building.
So the total square footage is 6,500?
Because it's vertical.
Yep.
It's growth. But the footprint is only 2,177 of the building. So then you multiply that times three for the three stories. So it's 19% of the property is covered by the footprint of the building.
And the parking?
And then the parking, when you incorporate everything in, it would be 6,470 square feet. That is parking, building, and sidewalk. That's everything, which is 56.9% or 57% for 60 is allowed.
And I do like the idea that it's going to have fire suppression. Quite needed.
Let me test, may I ask you that?
No, I'm looking at it.
Okay.
I've got, I looked at it before, like, a month ago.
I know. Okay. And the stairwells are exterior.
I like that.
Yeah.
I'm dubious about the garbage, having looked at the house down the street repeatedly with the garbage, always a mess.
Even with the dumpster enclosure?
No, it doesn't, it has an enclosure, but it has separate garbage cans, and a rump key picks it up, and it's a mess. I dread by the way it is.
You're talking about the Stewart one, the one at the T?
Yeah, the T at Stewart.
Yeah.
I know you don't want us like that.
No, I mean, yeah, well, yeah, it's something we could always put in. Don't talk about requirements for that. I mean, if we have requirements for bike racks, we should definitely put some dumpsters too.
Yeah.
I think the only term is adequate. It has to be adequate, and that's always a, depends on how fast it fills up. Guarantee it'll be overflowing.
I haven't seen, how many cans you have or rooms?
Six. One for each apartment.
It's better than what they have down the street, that's.
Six cans?
Yeah.
What size, 30 gallon?
Well, they could be 50 gallons, I mean, maybe outside is garbage.
Legislatively, it's supposed to be 30 gallons. I get a call from somebody quite regularly about that.
Yeah, 30 gallons.
30 gallons?
Per unit, which.
One or two. Two, essentially.
Right.
And most households are two 30-gallon trash cans per week.
So how many units, we say?
Six.
There are six. Twelve cans, 12 30-gallon cans. That's one of the problems we have with some of the larger complexes down there, and they do have nice green in areas, but then you go down there and see that there's not enough room for all the trash to fit within those areas, so. And that's something we need to take a look at on that, John.
Sure.
And if, you know, you work with your supplier or the hauler, as it were, but maybe coming up with different configurations instead of having 12, 30-gallon?
But this one would be under, it would come to, wouldn't it?
No.
Why?
That's what I'm saying.
Why?
It's outside the franchise area.
No, I mean, it's.
It's residential. That's, you're making this.
Yeah, it's residential.
I assume it is right now, under the solid waste district recycling.
Yeah.
Plus the two houses, regular houses.
And it's also under, it's not a rooming house, it's an apartment.
And it would be if they remain cans.
It would be.
If they wanted to put a dumpster down there, then. But as right now, since it's cans, it would be under Athens talking.
It would be under dumpsters, they have dumpsters.
If it wanted to be a dumpster, they could contract to an outside entity. But if it's cans, then I believe.
I don't know about that. So I'd have to go check, but I was in the impression, if it's residential, really, and a rooming house, it can go outside the recycling.
And this isn't a rooming house?
It's an apartment company.
It's apartment company.
We'll check on that. You guys?
The other thing I'd like to point out that we just looked at, John, for your awareness, the bicycle, minimum of one bicycle parking space for each permitted bedroom. If the required number of bicycle parking spaces exceeds 16, which I think you're, what, 18 here?
Yeah.
Then at least half of the required bicycle parking spaces shall be covered, following guidelines in the city's adopted bicycle and pedestrian plan, so.
Covered?
Covered.
But underneath?
Are they going to have a bike and a car here?
We'll work with you on it.
Okay.
Covered.
We allow stack parking on that?
Stacked parking?
I sort of estimated half of the people might have bicycles, personally. I mean, I would.
Some of them might have friends to visit them on a bike, though, right?
Yeah. You can, oh, he's just tied to a bush.
You can chain them together.
There's plenty of room. It'll be all right, John.
So are we supposed to act on this?
So basically, well, so Mr. Stone's concerns really boil down to three points, right? Apart from tearing up a street he just paved. The stormwater calculations, the existence of the storm line, and then the utility connections, right? So those three things.
The main thing, and I think this is good, you know, he wants us to stack our utilities in the street, so we don't cut four times into the street for water, storm, sewer, or gas, which makes a lot of sense. And that will take coordination with the city, too. Making one trench go out there to hit all these different utilities as we go across to get them. And it should make it a lot easier, I think.
So it would probably be more advisable to wait until you get together with Mr. Stone to show him that specific plan?
Well, we, yeah, I mean, I just, yeah, I mean, fine, if we're, he won't be satisfied until we do that, but we have to do it anyway. Now, whether or not you guys need to see all that, too, I don't know. I mean, that's up to you. I don't care. This could be preliminary, as far as I'm concerned. I don't, it doesn't make any difference to me. It's just, we, you know, I, we just have to have an idea, and this is what we're gaining by this review, at least from city's personnel, is what the requirements are going to be so when we do go in here, we do it the right way.
If we do have?
Instead of drawing it wrong and then having to draw it again. So I don't have it drawn.
If we do have a little bit of time on this, is this something that you, you're more comfortable getting a more definitive report from Mr. Stone on before we make a vote?
I would actually move to table until we, he gets together with the director, Public Works Director, and they work through a little bit more of the detail.
Okay.
And that clause includes everything from sheltered bike racks. Do whatever else.
Is there a second to table? All in favor?
Aye.
So we'll table this until we hear back from you and Mr. Stone?
That's great.
Great.
Well, and it's not just Mr. Stone, I've got other comments that have to be addressed from everybody.
Yes, true. Although with the sprinkling, I imagine you may, the Chief Troxell, has.
Now, the sprinkler, I, you know, I, I'm not going to, see, I'll have to coordinate that, but I'm not going to have that until I bid this out.
That one. We understand that. I think we had that a case previously.
That'll be the case, even on what we're proposing to do in restructuring some of this Title 41, because they're not going to get those type of plans until they have their state-approved plans, which they're obviously not going to apply for until they have their site plan review done with us, so.
I understand.
Those, I feel comfortable with, that we'll still take care of that one, they get those plans into us, and we'll make sure that the plan that they got approved by the state matched the plans that was approved here, and then we should be okay.
Okay. So it doesn't sound like a problem.
We've done that before, and I think it was your project also.
Yeah, I've done this before.
That's fine.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Moving on to communications, 63 North Court Street. Is that a John's here?
This is the former BlueGator Building that did go to the BZA a couple weeks ago and received approval for a, their setbacks and parking. Today is very preliminary.
Today is very preliminary. Um, they have submitted everything to me for the Title forty-one site plan review process. We just finalized some of that stuff here in the last couple of days. The sign went up this morning on the building for it to be officially heard two weeks from today at our June sixth meeting. But we invited John here today to discuss it preliminarily, what, what their plans are on this project.
But this is John Valentour also.
Yep.
Who are Gator Guys LLC? Who are Gator Guys LLC?
A bunch of guys.
A bunch of guys.
Those are the owners?
Pardon? I think that's who, I think Bart, Kassler, I'm not even sure.
Kraus, Kassler, and...
I just talk to it, Bart is my contact person.
Do you want, these are the drawings. These will be for the Title forty-one review process. Are we gonna put them downstairs in the map room, or I can give each one of you one today, and then you keep, or how we wanna do that? Take a look at them?
This whole balcony issue...
Give one to RJ and Nancy at least, and then the mayor and Pauls can be in downstairs.
Nancy, you need some more stuff in your house.
Uh, this is the mayor, so he doesn't...
No, actually, that was over in Nicholas's place. So I can take one.
Yes, we do.
As a newer version, is that what you're telling me?
Yeah.
Oh, size department? So this is preliminary.
Retail tenant for...
Yeah.
Now, this whole balcony over Court Street.
That's gone.
Here you go. Some is still there.
So there is not a need for city council or a revocable license?
There's not a need for a revocable license. They took that out, correct, John?
Yep. To look on the drawing, I, you know, I'd like to know how far along I can stick out before I hit that revocable license distance from the edge of a building.
I thought the right away was that on the edge. From the building.
Yeah.
Well, there's a...
Truncated version of?
So there will be porch, porches out front?
No. They won't let us do that. The zoning board.
Okay.
Oh, the zoning board denied it? Yeah. Well, I don't know. He said something that would have had to go before council.
That would have had to go before council.
So what I'm doing, they're still gonna have, it's gonna be, uh, there's still gonna be doors there, and they're gonna open in. And there's gonna be a railing that would be like six inches off the edge of the building, instead of three feet. See, there's nothing to walk out on. But when you open the doors, your living room will become sort of like outdoors, so.
And you'll have that railing to protect them from falling.
Yeah. It'll be a forty-two inch hard railing like you would've had if it was an actual balcony.
Six inches means you can't put a keg there.
What is she looking at?
She's looking at the mini one.
I'm looking at the tiny.
Excuse me?
A bit of a protrusion.
Yeah, just a tiny bit though. I mean, just... That would, I, I, I would think that's nice. I've, it's, six, eight, something you can't really put a chair on, but you could put a planter, a planter out there. The structure is already there, obviously, to hold up anything I want. It's just, we're cutting it all back to the, whatever...
Well, there was, I mean, council took action on it before, and, I mean, I'm not necessarily saying you should do it, I just wonder.
Mm-hmm. I think it's nice. It's a big, the students like it, it's a feature that they enjoy.
It could be improved though, don't you think?
Well, you already have that on West Union Street also. I forget the address, uh, the old, uh...
Yeah, the Chinese restaurant.
Oh.
That's, so you already have precedent in that?
That was Greg Chapman's building. I did that too. And he called me in one day just to say, come on, look at this. And this tenants came in, they're pro, or, or prospective tenants, as soon as they saw that, they took it. He just wanted to show it to me, you know. It did make a big difference in their, the way that space was able to be rented.
Now, the BZA gave the parking. Was there any other variance needed?
Yes, there was, um, they gave a variance for parking for the business use on the first floor, um, of not having to have the parking. They gave a variance for the parking for the, um, rental spaces to be greater than two hundred and fifty feet away, but it is deed restricted, so it is, it's owned by them, it's just greater than what the code allows. And then they had to get variances for, um, side yard setback and a B three on the existing structure. And I probably should note that, uh, that, and we may have omitted not including rear yard setback on that. I'm looking at it after John submitted these drawings to me. I might have to make an amendment on it, go back to the BZA for the rear yard as well, so.
There are no sectors. This is built, wall-to-wall building here.
Right, and this is the difference between a B two D and fourteen and a B three, which never got rezoned.
I mean, everything down there has to get a variance because of, uh, ball controls.
Now, are you extend, extending it in the rear?
No extension whatsoever.
I didn't think so. You're just going that up?
Vertically.
Okay.
And it's one we typed it up, I believe we omitted, including it in the, uh, in the, uh, when we proposed it at the BZA, forgot to say rear yard as well. So I think we'll probably have to do that at one of the meetings upcoming, just say we forgot to include that as well, and have them amend it.
But it is existing.
It is existing, yeah.
If you're remodeling an existing building, I don't know why. I mean, the part that you did, okay, but the rear yard, I mean, but I wanted to ask, or I wanted to tell Mr. Valentour that, um, earlier in, in my earlier times, there was some problem with the connection and sewage between the building you're in and the library, and there was some backup over time, and I wonder when you're doing this building, if you're gonna resewer the whole thing, right?
Well, no, sewer, we've, when talking with the, the engineers then again, we don't have to, if they work, we have to put a new water line in here, so we will do some work out on Court Street. But if there is a problem with the sewer, we'll find it, because we'll have to make sure it works, and we have to test the system.
Okay.
And hold pressure for the new, the new stuff we're doing.
There's no storm sewers, and I know when they were doing the Streetscape, whatever it was, the last permutation of it, there was some difficulty that, I think they might've resolved it, but I'd never be sure, 'cause you're increasing the density so much.
The storm sewer goes behind the building. It's a twelve inch line that goes around the historical society somehow.
Maybe they just did fix it that way.
And goes to the street that way, whereas the sanitary and the sewer water go right out the front.
So it goes round, it's going down Rose Avenue.
On Rose Avenue, right?
Yeah, that's where it comes out, the storm.
No, we're gonna fix it this year. That's, this is project. We're gonna be tearing up North Court this year.
Yeah, I was just wondering, what is your timeframe for this?
Yeah, so you don't...
Because we are doing our North Court Street...
This one's, I gotta do right now.
We are, um, doing the North Court Street infrastructure improvement project. We'd like to coordinate that.
Are they gonna build it without a tenant?
Pardon?
They're building it without a tenant? Is that what's going on?
No, they, I think, well, the, I think they've...
Without a...
They want, we wanna get this done by next fall.
And you haven't identified your commercial business?
I think they've got somebody in the works.
Well, that would be heartening, because...
Yeah. As a matter of fact, it might be complicating it for me, because that might wanna move in prior to finishing the apartment, so I've gotta figure out a way to, to get a two-stage permit for the entire building from the state.
Are you coming back in two weeks with a full Title forty-one? Is that the idea?
Well, I mean, yeah, I suppose, but I don't, what else I need to have?
According to the checklist, the submittal is, um...
Starting today?
Proper, starting today. He's got everything that is required by the Title forty-one ordinance on the drawings to actually start our internal review. Now, we need to get it out to all of our staff.
I haven't, yeah, I haven't got anything.
Yeah, we haven't, no one in our...
Hasn't sent it out yet.
I haven't sent it out to the staff yet, and that'll happen today, tomorrow, and everyone will be able to get a chance to start reviewing it and get the comments back to us prior to the next meeting. And again, now we're in the same situation. If Andy has comments, those aren't gonna be possibly resolved by the next meeting, so.
You have how many tenants?
Twenty. Twenty, twenty.
How about garbage?
That's the twenty residential. What was that name?
I wanna know where the garbage is gonna go.
Oh.
Cans in the food dryer.
Centralized recycling.
We are working on the North Court area diligently this summer. I think we're close to getting that worked out, so, yeah.
Trash in recycling.
Yeah.
The idea of this is try to, I mean, there's some elements of that original facade that you can barely see, and we're trying to fix it back up the way it was and take off that brick that was added on, up, uh, as you can see on the picture. It's not the original brick that was on that canopy thing.
Okay.
We're actually lowering the elevation of the street scape.
Facade, first facade?
The facade, yeah. There will be a little deck up there as well on this, an exterior deck for these two apartments that are on the upper level.
You're actually changing the ceiling then in the first floor?
No.
No, okay.
But we're, the, pardon me?
Asked if you were lowering the ceiling in the first floor commercial section?
First floor? No, it's all concrete.
Okay.
The concrete structural, the, the concrete second floor. Um, no, it's another building that was built very solid. It doesn't have a basement. It's a concrete slab on grade.
I see you're looking at the Zarni thing, you're looking for facades there?
Yeah. You're looking for the, you're looking for the right section.
So what else, uh, quick question. What else doesn't, since it's in a B three, what other requirements besides the side setbacks, is there anything else that we have to be looking at? I mean, of course, it doesn't fall into the B two Ds.
No, I mean, he received all his variances that, in regards to that.
Is there any requirement for the tree commission? I know this is down...
It, it is on the agenda for shade tree as well, so I don't know where that'll go.
And he knocked on one.
And, and it'll also apply with the bicycle plan, and I don't know how he's gonna cover half the bicycle spots on this one, but...
I can't do any of that.
Why wouldn't that have been included in the BZA?
A variance for that?
Because we have racks up, you know, in my parking garage. I get that it's B three and outside B two D.
It's the same reason, just like parking.
Is that a Title forty-one requirement or a city? How do I get out of that one?
Title twenty-three, zoning code.
I should have appealed bicycle rack too?
Yep.
You can put racks, you can put racks in the deed-restricted parking area, I'd imagine.
Okay. That's fine, 'cause that's, that lot is bigger than, okay, that would...
Well, that's a new section of code, so I think we're...
He's now testing it to see how it works.
I like the idea. I'd say get rid of the cars and make them all have bicycles.
Yeah. Well, John, you got seven feet to the rear of the building too, and that's where I thought we had ten, and they're seven feet, so you could do a shed roof off of that, put them behind the building as well, so. There, there's options.
We need to look at the trash too. That's very important for that area. I mean, you're working it out now, but...
It's gotta be part of the process too.
Try to get the centralized working in the north, north block.
Centralized, you know, you've got, you've got conversations with all the property owners in there, so you have to start talking to them now.
Got them in line.
But the main problem, John, is that when you actually get to the students, they don't know where their garbage goes, and they don't know where their recycling goes.
That's part of that education, is landlords have to provide that.
And who does the education but the landlord?
We do it, well, we, we educate the kids. Every quarter, we go downtown, pass out flyers to the area, people that are in this area, and, and, uh...
We all trust that the landlords in this case will educate their users better than some of the others.
The fact that, uh, the primary, one of the primary landlords has rentals on Court Street already and knows about how the system works, I hope that would work.
You're talking about Wharton?
No, talking about Joe Kraus.
So the parking's over here next to the stagger in, as we call it?
Correct. And that parking space is there. There's twenty of them, as you see laid out, and then the ones that are not in bold marking are the ones that are required for the stagger in location for that house.
Actually, I think it'll be nice to finally see a use in this building after all this time. Would like to see what the commercial entity will be.
I'm not sure, but I know, I've been told, be, be ready for it.
So really, this is just preliminary, so we're not really coming to decision. Um, you still have tree commission, I understand. You need to check out setback, rear setback.
Well, the rear setback one will be an amendment, you know, and then if he wishes to go through bike at that time, I suppose it could.
What's the tree commission gonna make me do?
It's in a B three. They'll probably make you bank some somewhere.
What? Okay.
I, I assumed, actually, you'd be back at the June sixth meeting, am I?
Yeah, the, and the shade tree won't be till after that.
I'm not even meeting shade tree until twelfth, fourteenth.
Twelfth or whatever.
But if he's trying to do some construction this summer, it's right up on it.
Yeah, this one.
It's pretty obvious shade tree on this will be a banking or...
Sounds like it. You could donate to our, um, street tree fund for the Court Street.
Yeah, if you replace it some any time.
We do.
Why do the, uh, the shade tree always seem to, or often at least, seem to, uh, be after, we're asked to make decisions? Why isn't that included beforehand?
Because they meet once a month, and you guys meet twice a month, and a lot of times it just doesn't fall in sequence. And the BZA will meet the first Tuesday of each, or second Tuesday of each month, and the shade tree meets the second Thursday of each month, so it two falls right after. So it's just one of the, what it is on the calendar.
Are there any other questions for anybody? Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
We have the reports from the city planner. Paul, do you wanna go ahead?
Yeah, I have, uh, several updates for the planning commission today. Um, first is, uh, just an update on the arts parks and recreation master planning process. Uh, we did, there was a public forum last month, uh, as well as two sets of surveys for a total of a thousand surveys were randomly mailed out to, uh, community center members and non-community center members. All those surveys have been returned, or at least, I believe, the proper proportion of them. The graduate class that is working on this, on those parts of it, the forum and the surveys, they will be doing, uh, a presentation on the day of June, June fourth, which is during finals week in Athens. Uh, I'm not sure of a location or a time yet, but, um, it would be open for a few people to attend. It's not, it is not a public meeting, though, open for the world to attend, because it's a, a final class, I believe. We're still working out those details. Athens City Council had, I believe, a second reading on Monday evening for, uh, to create an environmental and sustainability commission. Uh, this commission was, um, it came from the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Commission, um, through their discussions, and which I'm a member of that commission, are struggles with, um, trying to address the environmental, uh, efforts that were included in our comprehensive plan, and none of us being able, being, having the right skill sets or time to focus on environmental issues and, as, to get those implemented. And so this commission, uh, will be serving as an advisory body for the administration and for city council, um, similar to the way our disabilities commission, uh, gives advice to the administration and council with issues for, of the disabled. So that, again, that was on second reading. I assume, uh, that would be up for third reading in two weeks.
Paul?
Yes.
Quick question. Um, so, I forget how many members. I read it real quick. How many members on the commission are expected?
I believe it's seven, mayor.
Seven, okay. So we'll be looking for citizens to participate in that?
We'll be looking for citizens to participate, yeah.
Okay, and the other one, of course, is the Comprehensive Plan Review Commission. I think some of those members are probably up for renewal, if not vacancies. Do we have them? Do you know?
I don't have it on hand, but that's correct. Some are, I believe we have some vacancies.
Okay.
The, the commission, the, the advisory commission has been moving, just meeting very irregularly this year. Uh, we wanted to get these few things worked on and get those through, and then re-meet again afterwards.
Okay, so there will be a need for a citizen?
I can get you that information, yeah. We, we definitely will need some citizens. Uh, I'd hate for the Environmental and Sustainability Commission, I'd hate to put a call out when it hasn't even gone through readings and become law yet, or at least getting closer, but...
Okay.
We can do that. Um, the A and E P four study, uh, which is the arts and economics, uh, study that the, um, municipal arts commission, as well as the city and the county, uh, have been working on for over a year and a half, um, that's a study that was commissioned, um, using standard methodologies, um, from the Americans for the Arts, which is a nonprofit arts organization out of Washington DC. Uh, I think Athens City Council provided some funding, as well as the county commissioners, to get this study done. The final results from that study will be on, we're gonna start the, uh, public information on that on June twenty-fifth, I believe, at Athens City Council in a committee meeting. And then we'll do a second, um, the second round of, um, information on that and PR on it in September, once school has come back into session, um, at a Athens City Council committee meeting, and a, um, county commissioners meeting, and Nelsonville City Council, et cetera. We don't have the final results from that study yet, but my understanding from the preliminary results is they, um, they basically show that investment in the arts is a really... results is they, they basically show that investment in the arts is a really good economic generator for our community. It creates jobs. Within the nonprofits art sector, it creates jobs for restaurants, for hotels, et cetera. And so, from a public policy standpoint, those investments into our nonprofit arts organizations and into our cultural events is a real payoff for Athens County, which is ideally what you wanna learn from those. So, when you know that you're investing in it, you know that you're getting your, a solid return on it, that it's adding to your tax base, that it's adding to payrolls, that it's creating jobs, et cetera. So, that's what I expect you'll find on June twenty-fifth. And I believe that's all I have.
John?
Thank you.
The BZA meeting a couple of weeks ago, I thought I'd give you a heads up. The twenty-seven Meadow Lane case was tabled until a written statement or personal appearance from Bruce Wentworth or John Soul can be presented to the BZA about their current involvement in the project and their opinion on whether it addition should be allowed or not. This is required for the covenants that they, since they have not removed themselves off of those covenants as of yet, but that may be done by now. I have spoke with them, and they have provided me with an affidavit from their attorney that they, I will present at the next meeting, and they are gonna have that recorded at the county auditor's office, so that hopefully should resolve that case one way or another. And then the BZA can vote on that at the next meeting, which is May twelve, June twelve. So, and also, at the last meeting, twenty-two West Stimson, the Stimson Garden Project did receive a variance from the BZA for the rear yard setback for a new proposal of the Stimson Garden Project. Project is now mixed use, with about eight-hundred square foot of business area on the first floor, with some parking underneath in the rear of the building. The plan has been altered, so it sits about ninety degrees from the previous application, is a little bit smaller, and only five parking spaces are accessed from Montrose, where nine were before. That will be coming to the planning commission for open communication on the sixth, so two weeks from the day, and then maybe Title Forty-One on the twentieth, provided they get the drawings into me adequately, so, which they have not done so yet, so. And Mr. Valentour will be handling that as well, so. That's why I didn't wanna do all three of them today.
Is that it?
That is it.
Question?
Can I make one more announcement, once the mayor's?
No, go ahead.
Okay.[1649.12]